Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'll get in there, thank you. Tuesday, March 22nd, 2022. We want to welcome you to Georgetown County School District, regular board work session, and I mean work session with a W. We will begin this interesting afternoon with a moment of solace. Pray to the right person. Amen. Now we will pledge allegiance flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to a republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't miss you. No, you're good, I'm back on.
Public comments or requests. I don't seem to be able to find any up here presented before me, but in the spread of, uh... Well, I recant that. Okay. So now, approval of the minutes. May I have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the minutes as presented before us. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Poses? None? Minutes have been approved. Adoption of the agenda, which is quite interesting this afternoon. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we present the agenda as adopted. Those who are in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As habit, those opposed? None? Minutes have been approved. Agenda has been approved. Now to action items. First of all, we have the personnel list presented by Dr. Milton and Mr. Jenkins. The administration recommends approval of the personnel list as presented. Do I have a motion?
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we accept the personnel list as presented. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 As habit, there's none. The motion was carried. Now we have policy ICA, school year calendar, second, and final reading approval of the policy. Mr. Price.
Thank you, Dr. Lance. Ladies and gentlemen, we took feedback from the last time this was presented for first reading and added the piece about half days for professional collaboration. Everything else is the same as the first reading.
Administration recommends second and final reading approval of policy ICA as presented. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we accept the motion for policy ICA, school calendar, as presented. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Post in there.
Aye.
Aye.
Poses? None? As habit, motion is carried. Policy ICA, school year calendar. Repeal of policy KNBA. Complaints, instructional materials?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman Lance, members of the board, Mr. Price. I'm bringing back to you the last two pieces of our instructional review, instructional materials review, policies and procedures that we've been kind of switching around. I think as you all remember, we were trying to get on board with exactly what the State Department had put forward for us, just to make sure that we were completely consistent with what the State Board had requested. So to kind of finalize that process, policy KNBA, because it's a policy, it requires two readings to repeal it, but we, as you recall, have kind of substituted in the model policy and the model form from the State Department. So this is just simply asking to repeal this policy so that we can then replace it with the model one.
Administration recommends second and final approval of policy KNBA regarding complaints about instructional materials as presented. Do I have a motion?
I've got a question about something, Dr. Lance.
Sure.
I don't mean to be picky about this.
No problem.
But just looking at, um, just some wording here. Number two, the complaint shall be submitted to the principal and forwarded to the superintendent or his designee.
Yes, sir. And that would certainly bother me as well, but this is the one that we are repealing. So we didn't worry so much about the language and its specifics, although I think the group that had reviewed it picked up on that as well.
Okay, and also, also where it says principal, okay?
Yes, sir.
How about the principal's designee? You know, sometimes suppose the principal is incapacitated for six or seven months. You know, I think something like that should be in there too with the new policy.
With the new one. And we'll be sure, I think those are good points. And I don't know that I've been so specific about the designee piece, but I have been specific about the his or her, so I'll be sure to do that.
Well, having walked in those shoes, I certainly, you know, like to look at those things with a critical eye.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Other questions? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we accept the repeal of policy KNBA, complaints and instructional materials. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses? None? As habit, motion is carried. Revision of policy WAC, media center materials selection and adoption. Ms. Lindsay, and once more?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Policy IIAC, this is the one that we are fully replacing with the new model policy. And again, remember, we had multiple policies that we kind of had to merge together here. So if you'll look, this is our current policy right now. And if Ms. Kebler would scroll down, the next two pages are the model policy from the State Department. So we would be striking that first page and replacing it with these last two pages. And again, this is verbatim what the State Department of Education recommended that we adopt.
Administration recommends second and final reading of selection and adoption by fully replacing the text with that of the model policy created by South Carolina Board of Ed as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we accept revision of policy WAC, media center, materials selection and adoption. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Poses? None? As habit, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Information items. Healthy Learners update presentation. Dr. Mariana.
Rodriguez Mariana, yes, sir. Forgot that. You only told me like three times. Good evening, Chairman Lance, Mr. Price, members of the board, members of the executive cabinet, and everybody present. Usually Healthy Learners comes to present an update of our services to the children of Georgetown County School District at the beginning of every school year. But these two last school years have been a little different, so it's been a while since we've had this opportunity. And in addition, there are some new board members since we've had this opportunity. So what I would like to do is briefly give an overview of Healthy Learners, who we are, what we do, how it works, and then give an update of what we've been up to in the last couple of school years. We are a ministry of the Sisters of Charity of St. Augustine, and our mission is to remove children's health barriers to learning with love and compassion. I am the program manager of Healthy Learners here in Georgetown, and I am here with our student services coordinator, Ms. Merlethea Green. And we make the small but mighty staff here at Georgetown Healthy Learners. Health barriers to learning are simply those health issues that have been identified to prevent children from learning, from succeeding in the classroom. Uncontrolled asthma has been identified as the number one cause of chronic absenteeism in school. If a child's asthma is uncontrolled, they won't be coming to school, so they can't learn. If a child can't see the board or see letters, has vision problems, they won't be able to learn. If a child has any other medical conditions that are not addressed, they won't be able to attend school and they won't be able to learn the way they have the potential to learn. Our programs have been in South Carolina for 30 years. We're celebrating our 30th anniversary. Here in Georgetown specifically, we've been serving children in partnership with the Georgetown County School District for, since 2009. We partner with the school district and with local healthcare providers to coordinate and connect children with healthcare services here in Georgetown County. And we serve every school in the Georgetown County School District, elementary through high school. And we help families with the process of Medicaid application if they needed, connecting them to healthcare providers, transporting them to their appointments if need be, and getting medications, and when it is possible, making payments not covered by insurance for those children. We again partner with the school district and local health providers to provide the service, but our boots on the grounds, our main referral source are our school nurses. We work with every single school nurse in every school. They know us, we know them by name, and they are the ones who mainly identify the children who need our services. Because it's to their office that a child comes with a tooth pain. And if anybody here has ever had a toothache, you know you can't concentrate or do anything until you take care of that. So we may get a call from Nurse Crawford at Kensington Elementary that she has identified a student that needs to go to the dentist and refers them to us because the parent is working and cannot take that time off from work because it's their paycheck. And that child needs to go to the dentist. And there are other reasons why some children need our services. That's just an example. So we take that child to the dentist, find a provider. We might find out that that child has brothers or sisters in the same school or in other schools, and that they also need to go to the eye doctor because they failed their screening. And we can serve the whole family and so forth and so on. So it is a partnership that everybody does their part, and we could not do our work without the support and investment and partnership of the school district. Last year, even when school closed, even when we had to find different ways to serve, we found, like everybody in this room, ways to serve our children. We started doing health screenings because some of those were not being able to be done because children were not at school. For example, we partner with other community-minded organizations like the Village Group, and we screened, we did dental screenings and vision screenings in their summer academy and identified some children that needed to some services. We did our traditional services as well, and we found ways to serve and sometimes literally finding where the students were learning and transporting them from home if need be to our services. So that is just a slide showing what we did in numbers last year. In addition to our traditional services, even before the pandemic, Healthy Learners understood that there was an increase in concern about mental health in our young people and an increase in suicide rates in our young people, not only in Georgetown County, which we saw, but also in the state and nationwide. So we started training school personnel and community members in youth mental health first aid to help adults in the lives of young people identify warning signs of mental health challenges and crisis and be able to give the first help needed to connect those children with help. And I am thankful to the school district because they, people in charge agreed, bought in, and we trained all school counselors in youth mental health first aid in addition to teachers, administrators, community members, first responders. There are many trained adults now in youth mental health first aid. We had to pause with COVID, but then we adapted and we provided the training virtually, blended, and we are continuing to do that. And I am excited to say that Healthy Learners continues to look for ways to serve in this space, and we are starting new initiatives, additional initiatives, to support students in mental health well-being. And I look forward to that conversation soon with Superintendent Price and the executive cabinet to see how we can support mental health in our schools even further than we're doing now. So again, we, this year, we will continue our traditional services. We will continue increasing our footprint in the mental health space, and we look forward to continuing our partnership. I would like to, on behalf of our executive director and us here, thank you for your continuing support of Healthy Learners and ask you for your continuing investment in Healthy Learners. It is a community partnership that I am very proud of in Georgetown County to serve the children of Georgetown County School District. I would like to conclude with a very brief video that I think captures the spirit of our work more than any words that I can keep saying here. And you will see a real parent in Healthy Learners, real students in addition to the staff, one of our beloved nurses who is now retired but continues to be an advocate for Healthy Learners, and a provider speaking from the heart about how they partner with Healthy Learners. Oops. Thank you, Ms. Kebler.
I'm one of those parents, if my child is sick, it's like I'm sick. It's a burden on me. And if I have to leave my child to go to work and my child is sick, I, that's not a good feeling for me at all. For some people, it's tough to take off, to take a child to the doctor. But with this program, I was assured that they would get to their appointments and get back to school, and everything was fine. I was very happy with that program, very, very.
Good morning. How you doing?
Healthy Learners is primarily the bridge between families and healthcare.
It's nice to meet you.
Yes, I'm ready to go with me today.
We just take it for granted that that parent can take their child to the eye doctor to get the glasses. But sometimes, especially in some of our more rural communities, that's a half day, it's a full day off of work, and they simply can't afford to do that.
We just had a student recently that came in. He couldn't eat because he had such bad dental issues. And for whatever reasons, his insurance had lapsed. So I contacted Healthy Learners. They were able to get the student in for emergency visit and provided care. And that student has gone around just breathing. He was excited, yes. Kids learn better when they're healthy.
All right.
If a child is sick, they're going to be absent from school, and they're not going to be learning. Education is the way out of poverty. Well, to be able to have that education, a child needs to be able to be in school to learn. And that's the connection that we make with Healthy Learners. Your shoes untied, be careful. We have a lot of very hardworking families doing everything they can to provide for their families, and sometimes they need a hand up. Say ah, ah.
We just want to see these kids. We want to make sure that they're taken care of. You know, those are kids that in our system today, they're being left behind. And I think that that's where Healthy Learners steps in. They're closing the gap for these kids. Donations to them. And you're making a kid see, you're helping with their teeth. You're making sure they're getting onto their doctor's visits. When you see that lens go in front of that child and they're able to see what they haven't ever seen before, that's that moment.
A lot better?
I can move.
I urge parents, please take advantage of this because Healthy Learners is a big help to you, your kids. Everybody's healthy, everyone's okay with work, and it's, it is a blessing, very much a blessing.
Thank you. Any questions? Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Keep up the good work. Next, we have the money people. Elementary, middle, high, and principal budget presentation. We have Ms. Cameron, Ms. Haynes, and Ms. Mahom. Okay, Mahom, alright.
Johnny, do you want to get this here? Johnny, do you want to? Actually, I'm probably. Sounds like that thing's not on. Well? Good evening, Superintendent Price, Dr. Lance, board members, cabinet members, and guests. Tonight, I have the privilege of representing the elementary principals as we present our 2022-2023 budget request. I would like to start off by saying thank you. Thank you for all your support, dedication, especially over the past few years. It's much appreciated. Would like to also give thanks particularly to our newest intervention positions. Personally, I feel like it's been the most impactful use of our ESAR funds. We're seeing growth. It's one of my favorite classes to go into, seeing those interventionists working with those small groups every day. It's just, it's huge and it's powerful. So we definitely appreciate those interventionist positions. They've been a huge help for us. So I'd like to start off with our collective requests. We have one collective request for all elementary schools, and that is an additional allocation for a STEM. That would be a special area teacher for all elementary schools. The addition of the STEM teacher at the elementary level would enhance our special area opportunities overall and give students more opportunity to grow in science, technology, and math, which is an area of concern. It will also allow for more student-centered learning and problem-solving opportunities. In addition to that, it also does help with our scheduling. I think it's safe to say that all of our elementary schools are committed to common planning and effective PLCs. And in order to maintain this, schedules have to be looked at. Having a schedule that allows some flexibility for our special areas is something that we always look at. For example, if you have five or six teachers on a team, you're going to need five or six meaningful classes for those students to go to during that special area time. So that is also something that would be beneficial if we were given a STEM teacher as an extra allocation. And I also have the pleasure of presenting the individual requests for individual schools. So first up is Kensington Elementary. Kensington Elementary is asking for an in-school suspension facilitator. The request will address the necessity to continue character building with our students to increase time in classroom, decrease classroom interruptions and disruptions, and increase character building and school expectations for at-risk students. This request is also related to student achievement and our Kensington Elementary school climate. Second up for individual requests, we have Maryville Elementary. Maryville Elementary is requesting one additional custodian or an existing custodial position increasing from 180 contract to a 240 contract. The rationale behind that is to maintain a safe, comfortable, clean environment to learn, play, and develop. In addition to daily cleaning, the employee will be responsible for deep cleaning and disinfecting and also those important maintenance and repairs. Something else to add, if there's a consideration for the existing custodial position to be increased as far as contract days, is that Maryville Elementary needs a full custodial staff to prepare for the upcoming school year during the summertime. Next up is Pleasant Hill Elementary. Pleasant Hill Elementary is requesting a media clerk. Media clerk is needed to assist the media specialist with managing the media center. Media specialist currently teaches classes throughout the day. The media clerk will allow students to check out books and use other media resources while the media specialist is teaching classes as assigned in the schedule for the special areas. This gives the students the opportunity to still access the books and the media resources during the school day when the media specialist is teaching classes. Then we have Plannersville Elementary. Plannersville Elementary is requesting additional days added to an existing custodial position. added to an existing custodial position. This is currently a 200 that they're asking to be changed to a 240. They do make this rationale for their request. The recent construction and updates to the school, Mr. Stanley feels that it's beneficial for the school to maintain the quality and appearance. The size of the building should require additional help, especially during summer months. And lastly, we have Brown's Ferry Elementary. Ms. Grant is requesting an assistant principal. Assistant principal is requested to assist support and implement district and school-wide initiatives. This request is also needed to assist the administrative responsibilities of both Magnet Schools and Avid. Administrative assistance will benefit the school by improving teacher quality, increase academic, and increase academic achievement. And we did have a second slide. And these are just a few, these are not official requests, but these are just a few things that we wanted you to just take into consideration as others present their budget requests, particularly our district-level instructional team. Us as elementary principals continue to lead in the implementations and want to continue our professional development for the following district-wide initiatives that we have in place. Everyday Math, Letterland, and Eye Leader. We do suggest that the resources and funds for these and other related PD opportunities come to schools in the form of a general PD budget that can be used at the school's discretion. In other words, really focusing on what we already have in place and trying to make it strong, but just having an allotment of professional development general fund per school so that we can use it as fit for our school. For example, there may be one school that needs more everyday math training versus Eye Leader, et cetera. We also wanted you to note the possibility of expanding the RBHS program at the elementary levels if additional funds are available. This was a topic of our budget discussion. Some of us have a RBHS counselor four days a week. Personally, I do, and it's been a great experience. She's there four days. She wanted to take on a full caseload. She has. It's been great. Other schools don't have that counselor on their campus for that many days. So that's the discussion that we had. You know, maybe looking at adding down the road so that some of the other schools may have the four to three days versus the one to two days that they have currently. And the elementary principals also recognize the need for a screener, a progress monitoring tool for our area of math. As you all probably know, we have Embrace Dibbles as a screener, and it gives us a lot of great data as far as reading goes. But we would love to take a look at something that would give us a little bit more information as far as math and where our kids are with math.
Mr. Chair. You know, these presentations are really, really good. I mean, excellent. And I feel like sometimes I'm in a classroom. You know the expression, sit and get, you know? And I really, I don't mean to put you on the spot because you're doing fantastic, but I would like to ask a question every now and then. You know, when we get the, instead of getting to the end and then you got to go to the front. I wanted to ask you this.
I like to be thorough. I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. It's not with you. I just wish we could be a little bit more interactive. That's all I'm saying. Because you're doing a great job. And you aroused my curiosity with the STEM.
Yes, sir.
Do you know, or do any principals know of any model programs in the area of STEM? Because I'd like to see, you know, what that would look like in the elementary. Elementary, you're speaking of grades.
Well, we would, I mean, I'm only the third, but that would be up until, up to fifth.
Fifth grade, okay.
And sixth for intermediate. And that's a good question. And we, there has been a little bit of implementation of the STEM program in our elementary schools. It was, and it's my understanding, and somebody that knows better can correct me if I'm wrong, is that there were some regular classroom teachers that were actually trained for STEM with Project Lead the Way. The problem with that is that they already have so much to do within the classroom, the regular classroom, that there's probably a lot of pieces that are missing as far as that goes. So I know that that is something that we discussed. There's probably other things out there, but that's the program that we know of and that we know is being used in the upper levels. Another reason why we chose STEM is because it would, you know, transition nicely into the middle and high. Because we know that those programs are being looked at carefully in the upper levels. So if that answers your question at all.
It does, it does. But you know, sometimes when you find out where these places are, you know, within a reasonable distance, not out in like California somewhere. But you can go visit and take a look and see how they do things.
Yes, sir. I know Mr. Price is going to say something. We talked about that.
Yeah, if I could, first, your point, Dr. Caverro, because this is a work session and these are discussion items, the formality of waiting to a presentation and calling for a motion doesn't apply here. So feel free to ask away at any point with any presentation that you want to ask a question before we transition to the next presentation or presenter. Feel free to ask away. That's the luxury of this type of a meeting. So feel free to ask away anytime you have a question. To follow up on STEM, Model STEM programs, we've actually had schools this week that are taking visits to go see Model STEM programs at elementary and middle level, I believe, this week. So we're on the search. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I have a question, if I can read my handwriting. You were talking about Maryville requesting a custodian or expanding. How many custodians do they currently have?
I'm going to pass that over to Ms. Johnson.
Good afternoon. First and foremost, I want to say Maryville sits on 17 acres. We have five standalone buildings. Currently, we have four custodial staff. We have three 240s and one 180. This is not enough manpower to accommodate five standalone buildings.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
If I could ask Dr. Milton to come up because she and her team have been working on this as well. Mr. Davis, come on up and join her.
That's okay. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Davis and I have worked on this together. I didn't want to steal his thunder. But we have come up with, under Mr. Price's direction, we came up with directives with a formula to determine school needs, staffing needs, and it's worked out awesome. So we're able to look at that school. And based on what we've looked at, they do qualify for an additional custodian based on the school, the footage of the school enrollment, and it's the size and the enrollment.
The student enrollment. And looking at that, I know that the situation has come up with the summer cleaning schedule. And I think that's what we're looking at for them is increasing the days of their current staff to that 240-day contract so that that person will be allowed to assist in the summer.
220.
220.
We're looking at 220.
Excuse me, Mr. Davis. How many custodians do you got? Do you have additionals during the summer? Or you just use the same people?
We use existing.
Because, excuse me, I'm sorry. I've been in schools and I see where there's a whole lot going on in summer. I'm talking about from scraping floors to moving. Three or four guys, that's a whole lot, you know? So I just thought maybe you had additional muscle in the summer because it's additional work.
What we do, and we've been doing this for quite some time, we do allow our students to come in during the summertime. And we look at the school needs, like you just stated, the size of the school. And we're able to allow students to go out to the campuses and assist in those areas. And they have to be a certain age. And we have to screen them to make sure that they're able to carry out the duties of those particular jobs. But we do allow students to go out in the summer times to help out.
Thanks.
Thank you.
If I can add to that, in our discussion with Dr. Milton and Mr. Davis, what we discovered was that the allocations for custodial staffs was not consistent across the district. Those who could advocate well would get an extra custodian. And we wanted to bring some more uniformity and equity into this process. So based on the size of the student enrollment and the square footage of the school to come up with a formula, that way we could be clear, precise, and consistent with the allocations for those custodians. So that's something that Mr. Davis and Dr. Milton have been working on so we can move in that direction to get the number of custodians on staff at the right amount and the number of days attached to those positions at the right level as well. So I credit Dr. Milton and Mr. Davis for working on that.
Any other questions about our elementary budget request? Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Good evening, Karen Lance, school board members, Mr. Price, and guests. My name is Jenny Haynes, and I am going to represent the middle school. We want to first thank you so much for all that you have done for us this year so far. Allowing us to keep most, if not all, of our middle school allocations is just essential to our master schedule and allowing us to be competitive, especially with neighboring districts and the middle schools that they are allowed to offer. So thank you for that. We want to thank you so much for the use of ESAR funds, especially with our interventionists, our RBHS counselors, and instructional coaches. So those are instrumental in our student success overall. So we want to thank you for that. And last, we want to thank you for just hearing our requests and our wishes. So giving us a platform that we can express our needs and desires to you. These three things, we came together. So there are no personal, individual requests that are going to be presented tonight. We have three in priority, and they are in order that I'm going to discuss those. The first is to keep all of our current allocations. We know that there has been a change and a drop in some of our attendance for some of our schools. And we're looking at the competitiveness in terms of what the other district middle schools have to offer their students, as well as master scheduling conflicts and being able to keep our common planning. So that's instrumental in allowing us to do that in order to keep all of our current allocations. The next priority that we are going to be asking for is an additional CTE, PLTW, or exploratory teacher for each building based on geographic need. A lot of, all four of us are really interested in STEM program, especially looking to make our college and career-ready students available and ready for high school. And so after hearing that that is a need from the elementary school level as well, that is a greater need for us. And that's why we put it as number two. Yes, sir.
What is PLTW?
Project Lead the Way. Project Lead the Way. So that is a high school, kind of a career readiness organization and program that they have there. And so that would allow us to get our students prepared for those programs at the high school level. And number three, we would like an additional allocation for an exploratory teacher or a Spanish. Spanish was a high demand in all four of the public school and in all four of the middle schools. We recognize that foreign language is a competitive exploratory, especially at the middle school level. And so we would like an allocation for that as well. So those are our three priorities. And again, we collaboratively work together, which is a fabulous team. And so those are our three priority requests. Yes, ma'am.
As I've looked at the numbers in our middle schools, and I realize the declining enrollment.
Yes, ma'am.
And the small size. In our high schools, we make allowances for our high schools, that are large high schools, to have a higher number per teacher-pupil ratio. But we've never done anything to look at the offerings that we have to give to our middle schools based on that priority. I'd like for us as a board or as a group to look at when we go to a small high school and we go 16 to 1, and then we're still keeping our small middle schools at 21 to 1, there's no way we can equitably offer enough things for our students to be able to take in order for our math and science and social studies and English to be small enough class sizes to make the progress adequately that we need to make.
Yes, ma'am.
So I would like for us to take a look at that. And in that way, it would help give you allocations if that would be possible.
Yes, ma'am.
For you to do some extra things that would make those other class sizes small. Example, you can't have 150 students and have one social studies teacher because that teacher cannot adequately teach that. Though they may be able to do that.
Yes, ma'am.
But it's not a way to do a planning situation for teachers. So I really would like for us to look at the allocation method for our, especially our small middle schools, just as we do our small high schools.
And if I could give you the class averages from all four of the middle schools, from the core classes, as well as the exploratory classes, just so that you have that? Because we've already identified those. At Carvers Bay Middle, their core class average is 21, and their exploratory is 21. At Georgetown Middle, their core class average is 19, and their exploratory is 27. At Rosemary Middle, their core is between 20 and 24, and their exploratory is between 22 and 33. Of course, PE being the highest. And when we talk about the average especially, you have to really remember that 40 is allowed in a PE class. So we're pushing that number in just about every single one of our PE classes at all four middle schools. At Walkmore Middle, our core is about 21, and our exploratory is 23. So those are the class averages. If you're looking at all four of the middle schools in the core subjects and the exploratory subjects. Yes, sir.
If I can add to that point that Ms. Hamel was just making and Ms. Haynes, that number one request for maintaining allocations, this challenge became even more apparent last year when we were trying to ensure six feet to the extent possible between students when COVID was raging. And we used our ESAR funds to add an additional FTE at every middle school to help bring down class sizes. Without those extra FTEs, those average class sizes would be larger right now. In a middle school as compared to a high school, you don't have the same level of flexibility. For example, who takes seventh grade English? Seventh graders. In high school, who takes English 1? It could be ninth graders. It could be 10th graders. It could be 11th graders. It doesn't work that way in the middle school. So they do not have the same flexibility as our high schools do. So we added these extra positions last year using ESAR funds. And so we've got those extra positions funded for the next two years. Our goal would be to maintain these positions beyond ESAR.
I know as we were working on the strategic plan and the folks in the room that were middle school, it was a very big challenge as they looked forward as to the next five years where they were planning to go. And so I just want us to be thoughtful enough to look at those staffing formulas so that we don't come up against this every year and try to find money for something that we should already build into a budget because we know that our numbers really dictate that. And we will lose our children to other places if we don't offer some other activities for them as far as course offerings. Because once they've taken a particular course, they don't want to retake art every year or whatever. And we certainly need to expand that. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Price. Go along with what Ms. Hamel said. I always objected to the term "a high school dropout" because students really don't drop out in high school. They drop out in the elementary school. They drop out in the middle school because they get frustrated. And I want to tell you something. I see it every day, every day, when I substitute in these little kindergarten classes in first and second and third grade. Little kid can't even write because he's, I give him an assignment, or this teacher does. I don't know what he or she wrote. I don't know what it says. Kids in the second grade, third grade. Same thing with math. And it's very, very important that, what Patty said, what Ms. Hamel said, about putting those resources into the elementary schools. Because if we don't catch them when they're young, that's when they drop out. They drop out academically, psychologically, behaviorally. And then what do we do? We move them on. And I say "we," I'm talking about across the nation. It's not just our issue. So that's something to consider. These curriculum coaches, they're needed. They're needed in those schools. They even offered me a job as an interventionist in another county. I said, "I'm not ready for Monday through Fridays anymore."
Good luck to that, Dr. Caverro. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Tashanka Mahoney. I'm principal of Andrews High School, and I'll be presenting the high school requests. We'll do the priority requests for the four high schools first, and then we'll do the individual requests. The first request that we have is for all four high schools to receive a PLTW or an elective teacher. This will be so that we have the opportunity to This will be so that we have the opportunity to grow our PLTW program with a dedicated teacher whose sole focus is on growing our PLTW program. Are there any questions on that one? Because the second request is going to take a little bit longer. Any questions?
Not right now.
All right. Okay. So our second request is going to be a little bit longer. And our second request is actually in three parts. You can approve all parts or any combination of parts. So I'm going to look at the first part first, but this is for athletic stipends. We would like to be able to provide equitable stipends for our athletic coaches and ADs in Georgetown that is more aligned with our neighboring districts. The first part, it will be a step scale and it would cost approximately $78,000. Now, it will be for varsity head coaches at a 10% of their original stipend every four years. A step increase for varsity assistant coaches at 5%. And this is going to be based on your South Carolina High School League, public experience only. So you'll see at the bottom of the screen, I gave you an example for varsity basketball head coach and for an assistant varsity basketball coach. The zero to four is where their current stipend is and then each step after that is based on that percentage. Do we have any questions on that part before I show you on part two?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment.
Go for it.
I coached for 10 years, had two state championship teams. I look at this, I mean, it's nice, but look at the difference between zero to four years and 20-plus years.
Now, please keep in mind, we're only giving you a starting point. You are free to add as much money as you like. You just tell me what to type.
I don't have enough money.
Just saying.
No, but I'm just, and I understand. I understand that.
We were trying to be equitable as best we could with all of the sports. Okay, part two would be for, the ADs would actually receive $500 per varsity athletic sport. What you'll see on your screen now is each high school's varsity sports listed out. And if we paid an additional $500 per sport, what the ADs would receive at each of the four high schools. All right. And then part three, part three is if we were to add two additional football supplements for a maximum each of about $5,000, it would be an approximate total of $40,000. So altogether, that gives you the three parts to the athletic stipends. Are there any questions on athletic stipends?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What do you mean by football supplements?
It would be what we would pay for football coaches. So we would add, we could add two additional football coaches. Are there any questions, any other questions on athletics before I go to part, to our next priority? Okay, then the third request for high schools is an academic principal fund and it will be approximately $10,000 to $15,000 per school. And it will be provided for opportunities for our non-athletic, our non-money generating teams or programs to be able to participate in competitions and other key events that currently we are having a hard time funding for some of our students. Examples could be robotics, FBLA, those type of teams.
I've got a question about that. Would that eliminate fundraising for those particular ones? Just like suppose you had, I'm just pulling one out of a hat, the STEM team, okay? Are they going to, do they have fundraisers?
It would not eliminate fundraisers, but it would help because sometimes they are not able to fundraise enough and this will help. So those are the three priorities for the high schools. Are there any other questions before I go to the individual? So then our individual requests are coming from Andrews High and Andrews High has two individual requests. The first request we have is to, is the addition of an administrative assistant, an assistant administrator. Currently Andrews High has one principal and one assistant principal. We do not have an assistant administrator. All the other high schools do and we want to be on par with the other high schools. And our second request is for an actual dedicated chorus teacher. It would be an extra allocation. Currently, our fine arts department only has a band teacher and an art teacher. We don't have a chorus teacher. The other high schools do. Also, Rosemary has both a full-time chorus and a full-time band teacher. And we would like to be able to still offer that to our students when they come to Andrews High, as well as when we did feedback surveys from our Title I, feedback from our parent surveys and student surveys. They also requested that we actually had a dedicated chorus teacher to begin a true chorus program at Andrews High School. If there are no other questions, I thank you from the four high schools and I thank you for listening to us today.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Good evening, Chairman Lance, Superintendent Price, board members, cabinet members and guests. It is my pleasure to stand before you today and present to you our Title I update for the 2122 school year. So as I'm waiting for my presentation, I'm going to go ahead and start because I understand that I'm under a time constraint here. But I just want to review for the public to make sure that everyone understands, you know, what is Title I? Title I is a law under what was enacted back in 1965 as the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which provides supplementary funds for our schools that are high poverty. Now, it's under the Every Student Succeed Act. The importance of these funds are to make sure that we're able to close the achievement gap. And some of the things that are, there we go. Some of the items that we use with these allocated funds are providing extra teachers for class size reduction, interventionists, funding for professional development, parenting activities, students incentives, additional instructional materials and supplies to support our kids in all content areas. In addition to that, it's very important that we include our parents in our Title I activities. So the next big question is, and I think it's important that I express to the public on how this works. The federal government provides funding to states based on census and poverty data each year. So it's very important, parents and also to the public, that we complete our census data every five years. Once we are given the allocation, the South Carolina Department of Education sends the allocations to our local school district. And our school district identifies eligible schools using pupils in poverty. And that's something new. And I actually appreciate this new change because it gives us, gives us a more accurate account on which schools should receive these funds. The allocations are based on the enrollment for the 135th day. That means we're using the allocations for this particular year from last year to make sure that we have the proper allocation for each school based on governmental assistance. And that includes TANF, SNAP and also Medicaid, which is very helpful for our schools that are high poverty. So as we look at our allocation for this year, this year we received a little over $3.4 million, which is $30,000 less than last year. We're currently serving seven elementary schools. We have three middle schools and also two high schools and one private school. During the month of March, we normally send out letters to our private schools to see who's interested. And normally it's about 14 to 15 letters and we received back one for interest for this current school year. So, once we get our allocation, the first thing that we do is we pull from the top. Private schools receives their allocations first and then we decide among our district how we are going to spend those funds. This year, we're supporting a salary for our virtual program coordinator, which is also an instructional coach who serves our Title I schools. We have a student placement specialist. That person is responsible for our foster care intake. We have parenting supplies and also workshops that we have funding for. Currently, we have McKinney-Ventle money and we only have three students that are identified. We have 97 foster care students. We have funding for them in addition to administrative supplies and conferences. And lastly, indirect costs. Now, as we look at a breakdown of our district set aside, as you can see, 49.1% of our district set asides are spent in direct cost, okay? Then we have our private schools at 0.8%. We have our professional development at 6.8%. And let me make sure I make this clear. The professional development is for me as the executive director to travel to Title I conferences, also for our virtual coordinator and our student placement specialist. So it's only the PD happening to our district staff members. 12.7% is in instructional materials and supplies, 14.3% for parenting and 16.3% for salaries. Are there any questions about district set asides? Okay. So as we look at our elementary schools, as I stated before, we have seven elementary schools. And if you would look at our elementary schools, I have it in descending order from our highest poverty on down as, for its allocations. And what we do is we look at the number of PIP students times the per pupil allocation to come up with their actual totals. So as we look deeper at the allocated funds, as you will know, and I know this is no surprise to you, most of our funds are going towards salaries, 66.9%, okay? We have 15.8% for professional development, 27, sorry, 12.7% for instructional software and materials and supplies and 4.6% for parenting. Are there any questions about our elementary allocations? As we look at our middle schools, we have three middle schools. Here again, we have them in descending order, being that Rosemary Middle School would be our highest poverty school. And as we look at their breakdown, here again, salaries, we have 68.7% of our funds are spending on salaries, 8.6% is professional development, 19.1% in instructional materials and supplies and for parenting, 3.6% are spent. Are there any questions about our middle school allocation? And lastly, we have two high schools, again, in descending order, being that Andrews High is our highest poverty school, okay? And their breakdown is as follows. Salaries being the most, 66.2% for salaries. For their PD, 12.9%, 19% for instructional materials and supplies and for parenting, 1.9%. That concludes our overview for our Title I update for the 2122 school year. If you want to look at the plans in detail, you can click on that link. And for those of you who don't have the link, if you'll go to our district website and go to department, from department, go to academic services. From there, go to innovations and special programs and you'll see a link for Title I plans. That's public knowledge. Are there any questions?
Ms. Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we going to lose money this year based on our number, the drop in our enrollment?
We're anticipating, yes, ma'am, that there will be a drop in our funding, absolutely. And with that, we are also, and we've already had a discussion about our current allocations for class size reductions. We have to look at that very closely because the state is watching that very closely. And hopefully we'll have the final allocation by the end of April.
And as we spoke about even earlier when we were looking at, again, strategic plans
Yes, ma'am.
and we're looking at class size reduction, that's going to impact budget, both Title I and our regular budget with number of teacher allocations.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
In order for us to be comparable. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because it looks like our drop in enrollment is going to impact severely.
Yes, ma'am.
That equitability.
Yes, ma'am. And business services along with HR, we've been in close communication and our schools are sort of aware what to be on the lookout for. So we're trying to prepare. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Again, thank you all for your support.
Ms. Lisa Johnson. Esser funds update presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
For money.
Yes, sir, more money. Chairman Lance, board members, Mr. Price. We have an update for you tonight on our Esser funding. This is actually the third year that we've had some type of funding through Esser. We, the next page, this is where we are with all three pots of money. You can see that the CARES Act, which was what we call Esser I, we have spent. By June 30th, we have, we will have closed that out. So that is done. The second Esser pot of money, out of the 11.7 million that we were allocated, we have spent 10.2 at this point. So we are right, as of March, 87% spent in the Esser II funding. The Esser III, and that money is, runs out September 23. So we're on track with that. Esser III or ARP, excuse me, the total allocation was 26.4 million. We have spent about 10% of that right, as of right now. So we have, still have 23.6 million left and planned for, budgeted for, for the next two years. Any questions about any of that?
As we look at that, the money, the, the 1.5 million that we have left in Esser II,
Yes, ma'am.
that's still got to be expended through June 30th. I mean, we still have salaries and things in that.
Yes, we do.
So we are probably going to still be over into our other money.
We should be, we should spend most of Esser II, a good bit of it by the end of this year. And then, well, we still have some to start, to do summer and start the fall with. But yeah, we're already transitioning into Esser III.
And that way, the money that we've got, and I'm trying to understand, we still have all these positions that we've allocated for next year and the next year? And all of those positions are going to be consumed in, in the Esser III money?
After this year, and whatever we have, after we've spent out Esser II, we'll start the year and put people in Esser II until it's all gone. And then, yes, we'll start spending Esser III for those folks for two years. But now, if you, if you go to the next slide, these are the positions that we brought to you when we, when, last time we presented, that we had 62.2 positions in Esser. And these are the positions that you've seen before. Next slide. These are the positions that we call over allocated. These are the ones that, these are teachers and other, other professionals that will need to be moved back into other funds wherever, local title someplace after Esser runs out. But you can see, we've, we're able to add back some teachers for enrollment improvements for three schools. So we have reduced from 31.7 for this school year to 27.1 for next school year. So we are working very hard trying to use attrition, retirements and resignations, that kind of thing to balance the enrollment needs with the teacher class sizes and things. Did that answer your question?
It does. I just, I'm, I'm concerned that, I know that at the end of this, that we know there are a number of positions that are going to have to come back into local funds. And we can't wait till the end of this and all of a sudden decide they need to go back.
Right.
So, and I, and I see that we moved some of them back. I'm real comfortable with that. I'm real comfortable with that. I still am not real sure I'm comfortable with our overages that we're leaving in Esser monies and not making provisions as our enrollment decreases. So I will be anxious to see that.
And today was the one thirty-fifth day. So we are gathering that information now. We'll rerun all the teacher allocations again. And we have met with principals so that they are aware of where we think they are. We'll, we'll check it again and let them know for sure. But we've also got, you know, if, if there are any resignations or retirements between what we know about and the end of the school year, we're holding. We're holding those positions. We're not. But, you know, there are certain positions that they're really hard to fill. And so you, you just have to, you know, to provide services, you have to hire too. So we're, we're trying to balance all that.
Our middle and high positions are critical because they're subject specific.
Right.
Our elementaries and early childhood, not so specific. But those are, those in middle and high school are certainly.
Yes, ma'am.
There are not going to be.
And I, I think if you look at our postings, you'll see that there are many of those positions listed. We're trying to find teachers.
Yeah, I, I would worry about, you know, bringing those interventionists back in, in twenty-twenty-four. That's eighteen positions.
Correct. And so part of the discussion that we've already had with our principals is they're started to plan for that now. That they know that the funding for that position runs out after two more years. So their choice is to keep an interventionist and absorb that into their allocation or move the interventionist back into one of their allocated classroom teaching positions. But some way, they've got to work on a plan and they're all doing that. They, if you ask them now, what's their plan for their interventionist, they can probably tell you what their plan is. They're not going to wait until this money expires after two more years and say, hey, Ms. Johnson, what do we do now? They've already got their plan in place. They've got some contingencies in place. If this happens, then I'm going to do this. If not, then I'm going to do that. So they've already begun working on that. They can all articulate their plan for these interventionist positions. They know that these positions are funded out of Esser and it doesn't run on after these two years. Some are already taking the steps to move interventionists into their Title I plans. So they've got it covered. Others are going to wait for a couple of years. And then if Title I's available, they're going to move it into Title I at that time. So they're already creating their plans. That eighteen point seven is the largest chunk. And then, but you look at the, the teachers at Kensington, Waukesha Middle, Waukesha Elementary, they went from seven positions down to two point four. And we could have brought them all into balance right now and saying, we're going to take those one point four over from Kensington and that one from Waukesha Middle, go ahead and move them into another vacancy. But Esser gives us the flexibility not to do that. We can keep them there. We've got two more years to absorb them through attrition without having to move somebody to a different school. After two more years that we're still there, then we would have to consider that. But right now, these Esser funds allow us the flexibility to not move people just to bring them into balance. And so we're bringing that gradually into more of a balance. And there are other positions that are paid out of Esser funds that are coming up in the presentation that Ms. Johnson's going to talk about. So I want you to, I want you to know that while there are a lot of positions tied up, we have a plan for every one of these positions, I can assure you.
Sort of along the same lines, you know, we, we have all, we still have a huge chunk of money in Esser funds. Are we on target with what we said we would do with our plan?
Yes, sir.
That's coming up?
Well, I, I can bring that back to you. Tonight was mainly about totals and positions because you're, you're going to be looking at personnel.
I just saw how much was left and I'm like, wow. And I went back and looked at what was presented to us in the plan. I just wondered, maybe think, where are we?
Yeah, it's, it's, we're planning to.
Yeah, we're right on track and on schedule with everything that we presented as part of our plan. But what we've learned, and Dr. Giles oversees this plan for us, Ms. Johnson oversees the finance part of it, is that we have the discretion to review our plan annually. And if we want to update it and say, well, we no longer need funds for this, now we need it for that, we have the ability to adjust our plan as we move forward.
Okay.
The next slide shows, excuse me, the funded positions that are still budgeted where they were. But because we do have some flexibility with our Esser funds, we moved the positions to Esser to free up funds in the general fund to be able to roll into fund balance to help with a funding cliff if we need it to. We also remember, we use some of our fund balance to pay for the hard work pays off bonus.
Right.
So these positions, though, we have a plan. They'll just, we'll put them back where they're budgeted for. And these are the sixteen positions that would end, and, and everyone has been told they would end after the June twenty-four, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So those are ones that we have never planned to keep and, and they will go away after this. Unless we can find a different, unless we come to you with something different, but.
Some of them we might want to keep.
Some of them you may want, right.
I see some things on here that we know we're going to definitely need to extend or it looks as though they're going to be a priority.
Yes, ma'am.
With student needs.
And we'll have the next two years to be able to look at those and figure out if we want to keep them and how we could fund them. Then the next slide, these are the ones that we feel strongly we would like to keep. And Mr. Price mentioned the middle school allocations earlier. So just, we do know that we want to ask for those, to, to keep those for middle school teachers. We need the reading coach at Waukesha Middle. And we were able to reduce the custodians because of our, because of our lower enrollment from three positions to one in Esser. So we reduced those by two. Any questions about those? So we've gone from sixty-two point two FTEs in Esser to fifty-five point six projected for twenty-two, twenty-three.
Ms. Johnson, the programs that we've purchased, like the I-Ready, some of those things, it's not just people.
Exactly, yes, ma'am.
That we're going to have to put back in local funds. Those are things that are annual. Am I correct?
You're correct. Licenses.
Those are large chunks of money.
Mm-hmm.
So we're going to have to really take a deep dive into where we're going as we move forward.
And not only that, Ms. Hamel, but similar to some of those positions that because of their duties, they're, we're able to fund those out of Esser. So we've moved them out of the general budget temporarily for a few years over there, which is, allows us to hold on to the funds from our general budget. And these curriculum resources are kind of the same way. We're using Esser to fund them right now, but eventually, they will move back into the general budget. We haven't allocated those funds someplace else. We, we know that those things and those specific positions are going to be coming back. So we're real careful with that.
I just think our public needs to see that, that when we put this money into our fund balance now, that it isn't money that we didn't need.
Oh.
Because all of a sudden, we're going to come up to this bump in the road. And it's going to look like maybe it could, that we didn't do a real good job of taking care of money and all of a sudden, we have to do this. So I think along the road, we need to be sure our public understands that yes, this money may be going back into fund balance now, but with the understanding we're using federal dollars and that eventually, there's going to be a need for those things and it isn't that we don't have that need now.
That's correct.
That we just have, you know, a temporary fix for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Those deposits into the fund balance won't be that amount once these special funds cease.
Right, because sometimes that's a misunderstanding once something is in that money and then all of a sudden, we have to take it out.
Well said.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, Chairman Lance, members of the board, Superintendent Price, district administration, as well as our school community members. This evening's presentation is a, a up-to-date analysis of our out-of-school suspensions as well as our recommendation for expulsions. First, I share with you our policy. Policy J I C D A is our student behavior code. And two things I highlight in that, one, the first sentence. The board expects students to conduct themselves in an orderly, courteous, dignified and respectful manner. And I highlight the last sentence. The board authorizes its school authorities to employ probation and suspension and to recommend expulsion if necessary to enforce this policy. Second part to this policy, we look at the various levels of misconduct that we have. That's behavioral misconduct in level one, level two disruptive conduct, and level three criminal conduct. Again, per investigation and per our incident reports, our school authorities or our school administration deem whether it's at level one, two, or three. And certainly, they can consult with us as necessary. So just a couple of points I want to share as we look at our statewide as well as our nationwide data. The first thing, I provide this hyperlink for you and certainly you can look at it upon review at a later date. But right now, just for purposes of this, that first hyperlink refers to data that has to be submitted to our State Department. And it's available for public review on our State Department. And what I will share with you is that the information in this spreadsheet, we're in alignment with the other, our other neighboring districts as well as districts across the state. There are no outliers for Georgetown County School District in terms of suspension for violent drug-related offenses or things of that nature. The second hyperlink that's available is again from OCR. And that data provides, based on discipline type, the suspensions and the recommendations for expulsions. Again, that's just to share that Georgetown County, again, is not an outlier as we look at our nationwide trends as well as our statewide trends. But that, it shows whether it's positive or negative, we're in alignment with the trend. So we know it's not just a statewide or a nationwide issue or Georgetown County issue. We're all in this together. So going to our out-of-school suspensions. First, we'll look at our elementary out-of-school suspensions. For purposes of this presentation, the out-of-school suspensions are counted by incident count. Our incident is referred to the, the number of referrals. It's not the number of students, it's the number of referrals. So just as an example, I can highlight Kensington Elementary with eighteen. That is not necessarily eighteen students. That's eighteen counts of, of students that were out-of-school suspended, if that makes sense.
In other words, if, if one student gets suspended eighteen times, that's that one student.
That's eighteen incidents, correct. Next, we have our middle school count. And again, the number is based on the incident count. And next, we have our high schools. All right, so next we look at our recommendations for expulsions. For purp, or excuse me, demographically, I skipped a slide. Let's look at it demographically first. Our district-wide data, just for information, our African-American population is forty-two point six percent. Our white population is forty-eight point three two percent. Hispanic, seven point four two percent. Asian, zero point five percent. Two or more, zero point nine five percent. Hawaiian Pacific Islander is zero point zero four percent. And again, our numbers pattern those of our nation as well as our state. That's no excuse, however, it does mean that we share in a national and statewide gap. Measures are being taken to alleviate the gap or to lessen those referrals in those high areas. So now we look at our recommendation for expulsions. Recommendation for expulsion are, are incidents where our students were in, in a violent or a criminal nature and our administrators deemed it necessary, appropriate, to recommend them for expulsion. At that time, they appear before a hearing officer. The principal or designee are there along with the parent and student to discuss the incident and various measures are offered in terms of consequences. So first, we look at our high schools. Again, incident count refers to the number of times, not the number of students. And I think it's important to note school size. Next, our middle schools. And finally, our elementary schools.
Excuse me, uh, Dr.
Okay.
Okay, if you got a student repeatedly doing things and in a high and aggravated nature, I mean, how many chances do you get to violently just disrupt a school and things like that? I mean, is there anything in?
We don't have a rule per, per se in terms of a policy. But our principals look at each case separately. I will tell you that if students are repeat offenders, then at that time, yes, it is a time for a recommendation for expulsion. But I will share that we have begun and we've, prior to pandemic, we were trying to get measures in place such as positive behavior interventions, restorative practices, things that we can do. Research will show that out-of-school suspension is not the corrective measure that will answer or is the be-all or the cure-all.
Exactly. I feel like every kid need to be given every opportunity to stay in school.
Correct.
But also, the other kids should be having an opportunity to learn without being totally disrupted.
Correct, yes, sir. Okay. So our elementaries. All right, so the next slide is a hyperlink, again, to our breakdown of our out-of-school suspensions as well as our recommendations demographically. You can peruse that at your own leisure. Ms. Kibler, I don't know if you want to pull it up just for a reference for them to see what it would look like when they pull it up. Okay, so it's small right now, but if you look at each sheet, each sheet will provide the count of suspensions, the type of suspensions, and then the number of recommendations for expulsions. And it's broken down demographically by school. So again, that's available for you.
Dr. Giles, do we have any students who have actually been expelled?
We do not have any expelled students at this time. So our next slide, these are office referrals by behavior. And again, there are hyperlinks available for you to review. These are, as reported in ABE, which is another incident management system that provides us with up-to-date information. And it also allows our teachers as well as administrators to correspond with, with one another in time so that it's not a, a gap in between response.
So when you have this, this office referral and the teachers see this and they see repeat offenders, et cetera, I know you mentioned some other programs. I think you did a presentation on that about what you do with these kids. You know, obviously, there's an issue. So do they, is there a protocol for who gets referred for counseling or gets referred for another service?
That's at the school level site for them because they have the more readily available knowledge of each student to know whether it's a mentor situation, a check and connect situation and where that's a mentor that checks in and checks out. When I was at Brown's Ferry and we instituted hugs, hello, update, goodbye. It was a mid, a morning, a midday and an afternoon check and connect with those students. So there are various measures that our schools are using as well as capturing kids' hearts and PBI, yes. So to answer your question, it's a school by case, school by school case.
Right.
Yes, ma'am. And finally, as we look at resources, tools and more, kind of what I was alluding to, things. things that we have done and are continuing to do. MTSS refers to our multi-tiered systems of support. Just as a reminder, remember, our MTSS refers to not only academics but social, emotional, and behavioral supports. We also have restorative practices in place. Some of us have taken, um, part in professional development and we're continuing to plan for that. We've done a book study on hacking school discipline, nine ways to create a culture of empathy and responsibility using restorative justice, and that's by Weinstein and Maynard, very good book, I encourage it. Extensive research, this is just a quote, extensive research confirms that excessive exclusionary discipline contributes to the risk for dropping out and for juvenile delinquency. Two highlights from Dr. Caffaro earlier today or earlier in our meeting as well as what Mr. Walker just said about, um, repeat offenders and them needing to be in school versus not being in school. So that's again, research that we've been looking at. And lastly, our incident management systems, again, we use scholarship and we also use Power School for our up-to-date information. Any questions? I'll be glad to provide an end-of-year wrap-up, um, after June, to put this all together and paint our true picture for Georgetown County and how we triangulate the process of academic, social, emotional, and behavior. But this was just a snapshot, so it's a collective collage of, um, things that go to play in this, but this was just one snapshot for what's happening in our schools.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
For waters. DEHEC Guidance Update Presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board Members, Mr. Price. I've been giving you these updates for two years now. And knock on wood. We're gonna get to give you some good news tonight and maybe you won't, we won't have to even have these updates as frequently as we had over the last couple of years. So what we want to brief you on tonight a little bit is that DEHEC changed their guidance last month and the three big things that they did, uh, as you can see there about, uh, they changed, uh, when you have to do close contacts, what the exclusion criteria is, made a big change on the threshold for going to temporary virtual learning, and Mr. Davis' favorite was getting rid of the mask requirement, uh, for students and staff on the buses. And I know that was also a, a happy day for our bus drivers as well. And before I tell you a little more about the changes, I want to show you a couple of charts that we made here, the reason why they were able to make these changes. So this starts when we came back to school on January the 4th, these were students who had tested positive. And you can see where we had that Omicron spike around the middle of, uh, January, we were up to 300 students out at one time. And you can see where it suddenly started dropping and I am so pleased to tell you, if you look at our dashboard today for students and staff, it's zeros all the way down in both columns. And, uh, it's been that way, uh, for the last few days. Our next slide shows the same trend that we had for staff, uh, where we'd gotten up with a, a very significant number out and now we're down to zero once again. So in addition to those, uh, good news items there, a couple of other things worth mentioning is that, uh, Tidlin's Hospital yesterday, for the first time in two years, had zero patients in the hospital for COVID. And then today, we got a notice from the medical university that, uh, they have ended their precautionary status and have gone back to normal operating status, all the pre-pandemic operations for them. So we're cautiously optimistic about it, um, but we're not gonna let our guard down just yet either. So to look at the, uh, exclusion criteria a little bit closer here, the, a big change was, is it previously dealt with the whole district. Now, if we have to go back and do this again, we'll look at individual schools. Now, our practice was, we were kind of doing both anyway, but now when we go to apply what the rules say to it, we'll, we'll look at those individual schools. The big thing for us was, uh, test to stay, you remember, was a way to try to shorten that isolation quarantine period. And two consecutive weeks with less than 10%, well, the day the rule came out, we automatically qualified at that point. We'd already been out of that range, uh, beyond 10 days for it. What that means is, is that, uh, contact tracing, the, the testing, the test to stay, the masking of close contacts, all those things, it was a burden on our, uh, teachers and staff to try to do and God bless our nurses and what all they've done with this gets to stop. So that was good news on that one. We can go to the next one. So if we're suspended like we are right now, next question is, what would have to happen for us to have to go back to using those same rules again? Well, you would have to have 10% or more of students and staff, so they combine those numbers and make a really big number, uh, testing positive for COVID to do that. If you remember before and we'll look at in a second, it was a much lower threshold for it. An important point though is isolation requirements for those who have tested positive for COVID have not changed. Isolation's still five days from all set of symptoms, they're still requiring masks for return through day 10. Of course, if somebody doesn't want to wear the masks, they just stay out for 10 days, same thing as we had in place before. And then the temporary virtual, uh, before it was dealing at a smaller level of classrooms or cohorts of 20% absent. Now, it's the entire student body being in isolation or being assumed positive, so pretty much the same standard, but it's a much bigger number to get to that threshold to, uh, get to where we'd have to look and go into a temporary virtual status again. And then lastly, the mask on bus, uh, the CDC says that while, uh, that they haven't actually lifted that requirement, that order, what they said is, we're just not gonna enforce it anymore. So the State Department, uh, the ink didn't get dry on the CDC announcement, but the State Department said, okay, we're done with masks on buses in South Carolina. So that's for theirs and obviously that applies to our district buses as well. So that's the update on that. We will update our plan now that we briefed you tonight and any questions you may have in a moment. We have to update our plan a couple of times a year throughout, while all the money stuff's going on as well, but we do it more frequently, we probably average about quarterly that we do it. And, uh, so we'll leave the other things that were already in place there, we'll just add in that we're not having to do them now because we meet the criteria in these changes. So we're monitoring carefully what's going on with this new variant. We, we, you know, in Europe, it showed up here, I think, there was a thing I was reading earlier about New York State, they were, uh, expressing some concern. So we'll continue to monitor that and we keep up with all the, not only the national, international news, we stay in close contact with our healthcare providers here in Georgetown County. So that they spot trends quickly and let us know. And like I say, we won't let our guard down, but, uh, we're cautiously optimistic that this will bode well, well for the rest of this school year. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have it.
Thank you.
You just take the good news and let me go, okay? Thank you.
Now we have board superintendent comments or requests.
Those medallions was, they were worth waiting for. I mean, you celebrate what you value and one thing that always disturbed me is when you come into the board meeting, there's nothing that really showed any respect for the schools as far as their name and their mascot and that, they look fantastic, very nice. Congratulations. Excellent.
Thank you to, uh, Mr. Davis and Ms. Kibler who kind of tag teamed that project together. So, um, Ms. Kibler with getting the approved, uh, logos and ensuring everything was spelled correctly. And Mr. Davis for working with the contractors and, uh, getting that lined up, so they, they deserve all the credit for that.
Very good.
Pardon me? Did I say a thing?
Well, I wanted to, uh, extend, first off, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, to extend a special congratulations to the Waukesha High Wind Talkers. This competitive speech team just won the 3A state championship for the 12th consecutive year. Congratulations Warriors. As you know, we are currently working on our new five-year strategic plan that will be submitted this spring and one of the areas targeted for attention is our, in our early discussions, is our CTE programs. And Ms. Singleton has arranged for a team from the South Carolina Department of Education to come and do an audit of our district programs and we will be able to use their feedback as we plan for the future. Our technical assistance visit is scheduled for April 4th through 6th. This is also a reminder that, um, we will only have one meeting in April due to spring break and that meeting is scheduled for April 5th at Georgetown High School where we will also recognize our CB Dodson Award winners. And finally, I'd like to, uh, ask everyone to join me to pause in a moment of silence in memory of Dr. Celestine Pringle, who faithfully served the students, families, and employees of Georgetown County School District for over 45 years and went home to be with the Lord on Friday, March 11th. Thank you.
Anybody else? I didn't mention anything initially, but we do have an executive session. I first looked at it and it overwhelmed me, so. Do I, do I have a, do I have a motion?
Submove.
I'll be moving second, that we entered in executive session. All those in favor, let it go on by saying aye.
Aye.
No, let's have it. Let's, executive session we come. Now, can I have a motion to? Come out of executive session.
Don't move.
Second.
Second, it's been moving properly second that we are now in a executive session. As a result of our discussions in executive session, we have one item in regards to employment recommendations for 2022, 2023 employment. Also, the administration recommends the approval of the 2023 employment recommendation that's presented. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
It's been moving properly second that we accept the 2022, 2023 employment recommendation that's presented. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those who's none, as have it, motion's carried. Meeting is adjourned.
Aye.